Let's call a meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Honorable Mayor Ron Shaver.
Here.
Council members Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Sasso.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Here.
Clint Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
Here.
Okay, first item on the agenda tonight is possible action on bids for CenterPoint Plaza Development Construction Project. Mr. Gleymer.
All right, thank you. Good evening, council. What you have in your packet tonight is a bid award request for the 2018 CenterPoint Plaza Development Construction Project. Think you're all aware that we have a nice 100-acre site we're trying to develop and have available for future retail commercial lots. So, staff's been working hard to get the design of the road, infrastructure, stormwater network, all ready and out to bid. We've done that. We originally budgeted $2.5 million back in the 2017 budget process for this project. We came back in earlier this year and explained that the engineer's estimate was right at $3.8 million. So, we asked for some approval to move forward with the project, which you all gave us. We did bid the project out just this last month, and we're pleased to announce that the bids came in under the engineer's estimate. We did receive two bids, one from McAtee Construction, doing business as Simon Constructors, and one from ECI Site Construction Management. We've worked with McAtee in the past. In fact, they were the folks that did all of the street repair work this year, the four miles that we did with the strictly for streets work. So, we know they do good street work. We're confident that they can perform on the stormwater piping and ponds that will also be built, curb and gutter, all of the elements of the project. Their low bid was $3,576,743.55. I will point out that we did include a force account on this project. It's essentially a contingency line item of $350,000. We hope not to use any of that. So, if we didn't have to use the $350,000, we'd spend in the neighborhood of $3.3 million instead of $3.5. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about the bids, or the process, or the project.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Gleymer?
When do you think they would start?
Their proposed schedule has them starting November the 17th. And I actually talked to Jeff Harms with Simon today, and they would like to get started right of way. As you know, we have money in this year's budget, so I'd like to spend as much of that this year as I can. And they have a lot of work they can do in the winter, clearing the site, grubbing for the roads, digging the ponds, laying the stormwater piping. All of that can be done throughout the winter, and they're prepared to do that.
Perfect.
So...
And this is all the interior portion of the roads?
Yep. This is Beaver extended to Saunders, Saunders north-south to Railroad and US-34, and then some work on Railroad, or on Platt, I'm sorry, itself, on US-34, so...
Oh, so they will start Platt Avenue tearing out?
Yep. They'll do the inverted siphon for the Platt Avenue lateral this winter as well when it's dry, so that we can get that intersection built.
Exciting.
Any other questions? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution accepting the bid from McAtee Construction Doing Business as Simon for the completion of the 2018 CenterPoint Plaza Development Construction Project in the amount of $3,576,743.55.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Clint Anderson. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Next, we have a presentation of possible action on bids for the State Highway 52 curb ramp project. Mr. Gleymer.
Okay, this is a project that was laying on my desk when I showed up here last July. Brad had worked with the Federal Highway Administration through their Transportation Alternatives Program to secure a grant for $75,000 to upgrade handicap ramps along North Main or State Highway 52, really from Platt Avenue all the way to Riverview. What he had done was he had prepared some survey work, or had a surveyor go out and actually collect all the existing data, and then he was going to design the actual project in-house. And I simply didn't have the time to do that. So, when I started here, I immediately looked to find an engineer that would be able to design those ramps according to CDOT standards and get that project ready to go to bid. We spent $4,000 on that design, pretty minimal money, to get it to CDOT standards. We got the project out to bid. Finally, after a lot of work with CDOT, they have a tremendous amount of process that you have to go through in order to get their projects ready and out to bid. We bid that out and received one bid for that project the first time that we bid it. The engineer's estimate came in quite a bit more than the $75,000 originally estimated with the grant. It came in at about $90,000, and the actual bid came in at $130,000. And with only one bidder, CDOT requested that we try one more time and seek additional bids, maybe remove the mandatory pre-bid walkthrough, which we did. And we were able to secure three bids that you have listed in your packet there. The low bidder is Can Do Concrete Construction for $121,012. Obviously, that's way over the budget that we had anticipated of $75,000. CDOT has gone back to all of their folks and agreed to fund the gap. So, the grant requirements are that the city would come up with 20% of the cost of the project, and CDOT will fund the other 80. So, our portion will go up just slightly. We're going to spend just under $25,000, but CDOT will pay the rest of the project cost out of their federal highway monies. So, we're pretty excited that they're willing to do that, and we'll get this project, if we can, get it awarded tonight, and start construction as soon as we can. I do anticipate that we'll start some construction this year, but we won't be able to finish. I think winter is here. And I'm concerned about, you know, trying to place concrete in the middle of winter and tenting and heating, and those things get very expensive. The contract doesn't purport that we would do that type of winter construction. So, we may get an intersection or two in before it gets really, really cold, and then may have to suspend the project and pick it back up next year. We've communicated that with CDOT. They're okay with that type of a process to get the project completed. The money's available till the end of next year, so we're asking that you would award this to the low bidder tonight, and then we'll get this project started as soon as we can. Be happy to answer any questions you might have on that.
Can you speak to, exactly, for the viewing public, exactly what constitutes State Highway 52 and which intersections that is?
Yeah, so this project starts at US-34 Platt Avenue headed north to Riverview. The intersections we're looking at are every intersection except for US-34 Platt Avenue, because that's already been upgraded, and Riverview Avenue and State Highway 52. That one had some right-of-way issues, so we actually removed it from the project early on. But it's all of those roads in between from Riverview to 34. All four intersect, or all four corners of the intersection should be upgraded.
And this is the little yellow bubble?
Yeah.
I don't know why. I'm sure there's a technical name for what these are.
Yep, yep. Detectable warning mats is what we call those. They'll actually be removing most of the ramp itself, the entire concrete section, and rebuilding that, because the slopes aren't quite right, the widths aren't quite right, these types of things. So, you'll see quite a little bit of work involved in the project. And then, yes, they'll get the little bubble, detectable warning mats on them as well, so...
And this will help us towards the ADA requirements that we continue to chip away at and everything that they found us in, to be at fault with several years ago, so...
You got it. Yep.
Good job going back to CDOT and, you know, getting them to pitch in the extra money.
Yeah, I was pretty surprised they did that. You know, they struggle with funding from time to time, but they didn't hesitate to find that extra money since we've been working on this project for so long, so...
Excellent.
Any other questions? There are none. I'd entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Can Do Concrete Construction for the completion of the State Highway 52 curb ramps upgrade project in the amount of $121,012.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
All right, thank you all very much.
Thanks, Steve. Next is a presentation of possible action of appointment of members to an interview committee for the municipal judge candidates and direct on sched, direction on scheduling a special meeting for November 13th for council interviews of the finalists. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. As you all know, our municipal judge, Dennis Brandenburg, was selected by the governor to be the new county judge. He will be working through the end of this year, and so we want to get moving on getting a replacement for him in place. There's a memo in your packet that kind of lays out the timeline for how we're going to go about this. The job has already been posted. I understand there's about six applicants so far. Well, six applicants. Yesterday was the deadline, so... And the Human Resources Department will be screening those during this week. And then, I look back at how it was done the last time, which was in 2009, and they had a screening committee do interviews to choose finalists, and then had a special meeting at which the council interviewed those finalists in person. So, assuming that you wanted to go with the same process, we need several things from the council tonight. Number one, to choose two council members to be on the screening committee, and then also appoint the remaining members of that screening committee, which would include myself, Susan Kirk, Amanda Dunn, Jason Myers, and Chief Schultz, along with Jennifer Kuko, who is not listed on your memo, but we thought better of having her involved as well, both the HR people. So, if you could decide two people from the council, appoint those people, those council members and the rest of these people to that committee, and then decide whether you want to have a special meeting on November 13th to do the final interviews. That's what we're looking for.
So, there'll be a total of nine on the committee?
It'd be eight, it looks like.
You including Jennifer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Four, five, six, seven, yeah, eight.
Yeah, it'd be eight.
Will all the interviews take place in this building?
Probably. I think that would make the most sense. I guess it depends on time.
Yeah, it just depends on time. Yeah.
I will, I will absolutely bow out as I was already scheduled to be gone for the council meeting on the 6th, and now if we have a special meeting, I will also be gone on the 13th, so I do not make a suitable candidate to participate.
Well, I also won't be here on the 13th, so... Lindell and Quick, I would not be opposed to sitting on it, I guess.
There's, you know, another alternative would be to schedule it during a regular meeting. You know, for example, tonight's meeting is going to be relatively short. I don't know, November 6th, I don't think is going to be that short, but, you know, you could make it an agenda item to do those interviews. They're generally done in public session, so it's up to you, rather than doing the special meeting if that's going to be a conflict. You also have the option of not having council members on the screening committee as well, whatever works with everybody's schedule.
I think we need council on there, since they are appointed officials.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Well, council will be doing the final interviews, of course, but, yeah, however you want.
I wouldn't have a problem being on it.
Okay.
I'm available on the 13th as well.
What about the screening committee?
I could probably make it happen.
Right. I can, I can make most of the screening committee as long as I have enough heads up on, like, when they are, like, so, I mean, it just depends. But I will for sure be here on the 13th. I mean, that's...
And five is, five is a quorum, so that's...
Four is a quorum.
Right, yeah, because you'll have two of us. I'll be gone on the 13th now, so...
Okay. So, are we leaning towards a November 13th meeting with Doug and Clint being on the committee?
Doug and Clint, screening committee, and then we'll have five of us there for the finalists on the 13th.
Right.
If we push it to the 20th, is that problematic?
Probably not. That would be in conjunction with a regular meeting, and I don't recall exactly what's on the agenda. It might be a long meeting, but we could do that.
I mean, I guess that's up to the rest of you, if you're okay going.
Not necessarily. If everyone's going to be there on the 20th as opposed to five on the 13th, it's something worth considering.
Kevin, are you going to be in town on the 20th?
Pardon me?
Will you be in town on the 20th of November?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I scheduled I'm going to be out of town because that was our off week. I actually scheduled vacation because it was the off week, so...
So, yeah, it makes most sense if we can have everyone, so that's...
Okay. You want to schedule it for the 20th?
Let's do, yeah. The final interview's on the 20th.
We can try to keep the agenda light.
Yeah, we can do that.
Hear that, staff? Light agenda. Light. 20th.
That always works.
It'll be real light, but...
Always do it Thursday that week.
We could.
Yeah, it doesn't, I mean, if it doesn't have to be a Tuesday, Thursday of that week works, yeah.
Well, then that'd be a special meeting again, but, yeah.
Thanksgiving.
We're joking, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, no, I'm thinking the 13th, like, if we did the 16th.
Oh, the 16th.
I mean, if we were thinking it didn't have to be a Tuesday.
I was, the 22nd is Thanksgiving.
Oh, and you're not back to 16th anyway, right? Okay, the 20th is better.
Sorry. Sarcasm.
For the record, sarcasm by council member.
I'll try to do better.
A lot of sarcasm is in the delivery.
Are we doing a special meeting on the 13th or the 20th?
No, we're doing the 20th.
20th.
Regular meeting. Doug and Clint will be on the committee, along with those listed in the memo, and Jennifer. And we'll try and work with you guys on the scheduling of those interviews during that week of October 29th to November 2nd. And I'll get in touch with you guys, and I would assume afternoon is better for you, Clint, and we'll figure something out.
Or before school, 6:00.
Yeah, we can do that, too.
Yeah.
Because they'll have to be during the business day.
See if they show up.
So...
Okay. Can we have a resolution to...
Sure.
...that effect?
I would entertain a resolution accepting the 20th and appointing Doug and Clint to the committee.
So moved?
Second.
We can do that, right? Or do you need me to actually say the words?
You need to press.
Your Honor, I would make a resolution that we hold a, the interviewing portion during the November 20th meeting, and we place council members Sasso and Anderson to the committee.
Second. Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay, 2019 budget calendar. Formal presentation of the budget and schedule of fees, possible presentation and first reading of ordinance 1222 to adopt the 2019 budget and set our mill levy and appropriate monies to the various funds with the city of Fort Morgan and request to set a public hearing on the ordinance. Mr. Brennan, Ms. Kenny.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the culmination of a very long, almost year-long process of developing the budget. We now have an ordinance which contains the numbers, the total numbers for each of the funds in the city. And, of course, the mill levy has not changed like it hasn't for 30 or more years. And so, we are, there are no changes to the budget since the last time you reviewed it. There is a copy, a cleaner three-column copy of the budget in your table files, as well as in your packets, but, so we're looking for approval on first reading and to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, which won't be until November 6th.
Nope.
Comments? If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution on first reading of ordinance number 1222 to adopt the 2019 budget, set the mill levy and appropriate monies to the various funds within the city of Fort Morgan, and request to set a public hearing on the ordinance for November 6th.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Next is 2019 budget calendar. Presentation of possible action on a resolution to adopt the 2019 schedule of fees. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is usually done in conjunction with the budget. We reviewed this a while back. I'm not sure if, since we, you saw a redlined version of the changes in the schedule of fees and just printed copies of only the pages that had changes. And then, we, in your packet tonight is a copy with all of those changes accepted. So, it's now as, as it appears in your packet, and we're asking for you to approve that resolution, that the fees are done by resolution rather than in the budget ordinance, so that they're more easily changed when they need to be, which happens.
Has everybody reviewed them? Have any questions, comments?
Nope.
If there are none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to adopt the 2019 schedule of fees.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe and a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda. It's done.
The consent agenda includes item A, approval of the disbursements in payroll for September; B, approval of the minutes of the October 2nd, 2018 city council regular meeting; and C, approval of the minutes of the October 9th, 2018 city council special meeting. All matters listed under item 8, consent agenda, are considered routine business by the council and will be enacted with a single motion and a single vote by roll call. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is deemed necessary, that item should be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
If there are no questions, I would entertain a resolution, accepting it as presented.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Kevin Lindell. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Okay. Public comment and audience participation for items not on the agenda.
Your Honor, I'd like to make just a few short comments, if that's all right. Nothing, nothing like last time, but...
Richard R. Rest.
It's been expressed to me. I've heard a couple of times that people have been concerned about the fact that city council pushed for a 1% sales tax increase for the streets, and that the people who are concerned that we had that tax increase and when we have a lot of money in the reserves. So, I just wanted to invite anyone in the public that has this concern, if they feel like there's, there's something awry or amiss there. They're welcome to give, speaking for myself, they're welcome to give me a call. I'm happy to listen to anybody who would just like to rant and rail. If they want an explanation, or they want, from my perspective, what happened, I'm happy to share that as well. So, I just invite anybody to call, call your council member, or if you don't like them, call me. But I don't know why you wouldn't like any of them. But anyways, there's a lot of really good reasons for why we did what we did, and I'm happy to talk about that with anybody that wants to. Thanks.
And I would, would just add that the same goes for staff. You know, if anybody wants to call me, or, you know, any of the senior management at the city, we'd be happy to explain that. Like you said, there are very good reasons.
Well, I would just add that we did the 1% because without it, all we were doing was maintaining the status quo and not making any headway on our streets. Our Huff funds were dropped down. We need to maintain some reserves for emergencies and that. So, 1% strictly for streets is exactly that. It is strictly for streets and alleys. And with the project that came up earlier with 52, that also encompasses our ADA problems that we've been, had addressed over the years, and we're doing in compliance. That's every corner. Anytime we touch a street, those have to be included as part of it. So, those are, are part of the reasons that we passed that 1%. And that 1% does go only for streets and alleys.
Well, and the other thing that I usually point out to people is that when you have those reserves, then when something comes up, the city has the money. I've not talked to anybody that has thought that laying, laying the fiber backbone and getting high-speed broadband into the city is a bad idea. There, there's a reason. Call it, Fort Morgan is the second or third city to be a gigabit city, and that's because we had the reserves. We decided to make the move to do it, and we could pay for it and put it into the ground. Other cities are hindered because they don't have $5 million to be able to put towards an expenditure that betters their city.
Those funds come from the enterprise fund that we utilize, not the general fund?
They came out of reserves, so...
Okay. Reports by officials and staff.
I don't really have anything, Your Honor. They're kind of wrapping up the summer projects, and I think they're finishing up the transmission, electric transmission line over by the industrial park. Probably noticed some crews today at the intersection of Sherman and Railroad, cutting in those traffic signal loops. Unfortunately, that's the way that has to be done, I guess, you know, after the fact. You hate to see them cutting new pavement, but, and that's about all. I don't, anybody else have any?
Do I have any stats on our utility barbecue?
Uh, not in my head.
Oh, right. I was curious.
No, I don't, I, I'll get them to you next time. They were pretty similar to last year.
Bids, meetings, and announcements. Ms. Dunn.
The city is accepting proposals for geotechnical services for the CenterPoint Plaza Development Construction Project until 3:00 PM on October 31st. On October 25th at 4:00 PM, the Museum Heritage Foundation meeting will be in the museum community room, and on November 6th is the regular city council meeting at 6:00 PM here at City Hall.
Next item on the agenda is an executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-402-4F, and not involving any specifically, specific employees who have requested discussion of a matter in open session, any member of this body, or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body, or an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the discussion of a matter personal to particular employees. And for the following, additional details are provided for the identification, city manager position. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Your Honor, I was wondering if Mr. Wells will be present in this executive session?
I do not know.
I think a lot of council members have questions and concerns... I think a lot of council members have questions and concerns, and I think it would be valuable to hear from him and be able to ask our questions and stuff. So, I would throw that out there.
No problem with it.
Does anybody, does any, Kevin doesn't have a problem. Does anybody else on council have a problem?
Would it be possible to use...
Let's just go to executive session. We will see what is discussed, and we can invite Mr. Wells in.
Is that Big Brother?
So, we can go into our executive session, and we can call Mr. Wells in if it's so desired by council. I think would be a fair approach.
Okay, well, so moved then.
Second.
So, I have a motion by...
Kevin. And then Clint.
I have a motion by Kevin Lindell, a second by Lisa Northrup. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. We will adjourn to executive session.